A little bit, I can get some early. Look at that poor stroke, man, out there. At least he's crying. And when you know that I didn't see anybody drive by that I even knew.
Yeah? How you doing? That's working great. Like it. Until I unplug it again, right? Or whatever mistake I made. It's what they say. I still don't believe it.
Hey, you feeling okay?
I'm feeling great. Hey, Mike. Mike, I get pumped up when I wear this tie. My UCLA.
UCLA?
Not USC.
Hey, UCLA thing? USC, I'm off until I get rid of the coach I got, Monica.
Yeah.
They play Hawaii.
Yeah. On Thursday, yeah.
Fresno State plays Rutgers.
UCLA plays Nevada this week, but then next week we play Nebraska.
Oh.
It's gonna be a tough one.
Corners here, huh?
It'll be real tough.
Rutgers. But I don't know whether Rutgers is that good.
Yeah.
You know, they were pretty hot, hot there for a while.
I don't know. I won't be here, so my brother's.
Um, this is for Officer Magdalena. Yeah, CHP.
Looks like he's getting long pretty quick. Seen him coffee once in a while.
We go ahead and start. But yeah, as long as film knows, we're. Running late. Yeah, yeah. Nine o'clock, you ready?
Where are they?
I don't know. Steve's running late, I know, but Phil's back there.
Gene's here.
I'm gonna go ahead. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, we're glad everyone was able to be here this morning. Would everyone please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence? We will be led into pledge this morning by Supervisor Ashida.
Move. Our president is to comply under the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, item number one on our agenda this morning, uh, is a recognition for Sergeant James McKay. However, uh, the most members of the Sheriff's Department are not with us this morning because of Officer Magdalena's funeral services this morning. Um, so we are going to be bringing that back at a later date. Um, we will now move on to item number two on the agenda. Um, that is public comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak this morning on any item that is, uh, not on today's agenda? Please do come forward and state your name and address for the record, and your time can, and will be limited to three minutes. Neil.
Good morning, I'm Neil Pilliard with Tulare County Parks, uh, five nine five three South Moonee Boulevard. I'm joined with Andy Parkinson, also Visalia resident. We're here to report on last year's Into the Trail Classic, uh, two thousand twelve, and on our upcoming Into the Trail Classic two thousand thirteen. Last year was very exciting. We had a hundred and fifty-five players, um, resulted in roughly just shy of ten thousand dollars, uh, boost to the local economy just that weekend. Um, one of the things that I've mentioned to most folks, the reason why I get excited about the tournament is the people come in from out of town and they return with their friends, and they come and spend additional dollars during the rest of the year. This year's tournament, we have estimated a hundred and seventy players, so we have more players this year. We have representatives coming from Florida, Texas, Nevada, West Virginia, and all over the state of California. Pretty exciting. Uh, we have back-to-back world champion Paul Macbeth coming again. Took second last year, he wants a first place at our tournament. Also, I've brought with me Andy Parkinson. He is a local to Visalia. He will be representing Tulare County at the tournament. He is our first pro that started here and has been sponsored by a team Legacy Discs. So, wanted a chance for the board to, uh, encourage him to represent us well, and then also, uh, give you some discs and T-signs from last year's tournament.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, say thank you for having us, and I look forward to representing Tulare County in the sport of disc golf, not only here in Tulare County, but, uh, across California and the whole west coast.
Wondered if he was gonna throw those at us.
Andy does a good job of doing that.
I would trust Andy, I don't know I'd trust Neil to throw them at us, I'd trust Andy. All right. Well, thank you very much for making the announcement, and thank you very much for the, uh, uh, tees and, uh, posters. We will definitely, uh, what, what day is the tournament again, Neil?
It's Labor Day weekend, so it'll be this Saturday and Sunday.
So I, I, I get a poster with a picture of Mike Ennis on it to hang in my office? Is that, uh, that's it, great. Yeah, thank you. I'll treasure this.
We wanted one with a good picture for you, sir.
I had one without machine on it. I need to change my attitude or what?
Well, you remember what you look like?
Thank you very much, and good luck in the tournament. Hope it really goes well for you. Uh, is there anyone else here this morning wishing to speak under public comment?
Oh, boy.
Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, and I will bring it to the board for Board of Supervisors matters, and I will start with Supervisor Cox.
Good. I actually wrote my stuff down this week. Um, a few things, uh, by way of report, our retirement fund last year, last fiscal year, uh, gained a eleven point seven percent increase. So, we were kind of in the middle of the pack for the state of California, but very, uh, did very well with our assumption rate being at seven point nine percent. So we well exceeded the assumption, and will be ticking away at that, uh, unfunded ballot. So we're, we're doing very well with the retirement fund as we speak. Uh, the Ag Advisory Committee met last week, uh, met with those folks for a couple hours, began to, uh, work on the work plan. And the first, uh, from the general plan, the first item that the committee is working on is the Ag Land Loss Mitigation Program. Uh, we looked at several different variations of what counties and cities do up and down the state. Will continue that process next month, and then start talking about which direction, uh, the committee will recommend that the, uh, the county go. Attended Steve Solomon's open house on Friday, very well, standing room only, uh, event at the convention center. There were several hundred people there, it went very well. Uh, the Step Up Law Enforcement Event is, for this year's, October twenty-third at the Holiday Inn. It'll be all-day event, uh, as well as into the evening. We are bringing two wonderful presenters in, uh, Dr. Gil Martin, who presented last year on, um, you know, dealing with the pressures of the job. And then this year, we have a gang specialist coming in from Southern California, who will actually be talking to our group of folks about the cartels and their activity, uh, in this area, as well as throughout California. It'll be a very, uh, a good training for our law enforcement agencies. All agencies from throughout the county, including our state partners, have been invited to attend. Uh, this afternoon, the Step Up Executive Committee will meet at three PM, and we will start the process of, uh, create a strategic plan for the county, uh, for the Step Up program for the next, uh, five to seven, maybe even ten years. So, very busy.
All right, thank you Supervisor Cox. Next, we'll have Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Paul, I was being late, I went and got a haircut and forgot my jacket, had to go back and get it. Um, last week, uh, we had.
Your hair looks nice, by the way.
Thank you, thank you very much. Last week, I joined, uh, a cadre of our, uh, our folks up in San Francisco, uh, and mediation effort on the general plan, and, and we're guardedly optimistic that we made some progress there. Um, we're under, uh, strict orders of confidentiality not to reveal our, our discussions, but, uh, anyway, I was happy to be there, hopefully I was helpful to the process. On, uh, Wednesday, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the opening of Road eighty. Supervisor Vanderpoel, uh, was, uh, the moderator of our event, and we had a good turnout of people. I think we probably had seventy-five people that were there. Um, I appreciate it this morning, as I was rushing to get down here, and I came down Road eighty, uh, at, uh, and the, the problems are when you get to Plaza Drive, some of those lights are a little long. But, uh, certainly very good coming down for Road eighty at the four lanes, and from a safety standpoint, tremendous safety and, uh, great improvement for transportation, uh, north and south from Visalia to Dinuva. So, Visalia said that's great for them, Dinuva says it's great for them, I don't, I think it's good for everybody. This, uh, this afternoon, I'll be leaving for a, um, conference, a Laffco Conference, and I'll be there for a few days. Hopefully we'll find out what's happening with the latest CEQA reform issues, that's one of the primary topics. And, uh, last week took a number three sundown to Cal Lutheran for football practice, and so that gets underway, and now comes a busy fall. That's all I have for the day.
All right. Thank you very much Supervisor. Next, we'll have Supervisor Ashida.
Okay, I attended a California Freight Advisory Committee meeting in Stockton a couple weeks ago, and made a presentation on the San Joaquin Valley, uh, Goods Movement Program. Our study's been completed, uh, we're probably going to go into more detail as to freight movement by rail. We, what we did is we took all these roads, and we prioritized the roads in the San Joaquin Valley that are important to the movement of goods. And what's different about the north part of the valley from Stockton, Stanislaus, is that their east-west connections are extremely important to I-five. And where we are down in the south valley, it's a great distance to get to I-five, so we don't have the same needs that they have. Well, I can say, driving up and down the freeway, you can see the work that's being done on ninety-nine, it's amazing how much work's being done, but it also creates a few headaches. And we also still have these trucks passing each other at two miles an hour faster than the other. I also attended a meeting of the Rural Counties Supervisors Association, was the thirty-three counties that, uh, belong, and we discussed the old-legged frog. And maybe I can get someone there to come into Tulare County from RCRC to make a presentation on that subject.
How much habitat's been lost in this fire? The rim fire?
I'm more worried about air quality. But, you know, it was interesting that we had a presentation on the Port of Stockton. And the Port of Stockton has made some tremendous improvements to that facility, and they have like thirty miles of internal rail within that port. And what they bring in is the bulk stuff. They bring in fertilizers, they bring in, uh, grains, and they take out grains. So, I didn't have a chance to tour the facility, but, uh, I think people would be amazed of what's happening in the Port of Stockton. And Port of Stockton would also be interested in looking for a south outlet, uh, via a short-line rail company, because we use a lot of fertilizer in the San Joaquin Valley. There were also, was talk about the governor and the state legislature diverting funds from a lot of different pockets of money to high-speed rail. So, there was a lot of concern about that, uh, and a lot of dissatisfaction with the governor stepping in, taking those pots of money for the high-speed rail. And with that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, our yellow-legged frog expert, and we will move on now to Supervisor Ennis. You're welcome.
I understand that the U- Yosemite Toad is on the run right now.
Tell him I'm a stick.
Anyway, I, one who attended the outreach meeting in Porterville that Health Human Services put on, it was, I thought was a good meeting. Helen Herrera, who used to be one of our board staffers, handled a, she was a curator, and did an excellent job. I think she did an excellent job of diffusing people and keeping them on the task of, hey, this is just a information meeting, this is not a decision-making meeting to hear today, we just want to hear the information. And of course, Abby Waiker, another one of our board staffers that they stole away from us, she was there. So, glad to see them go on to bigger and better things, so, thank you. Great, good meeting, I thought a lot was accomplished. I want to thank our marijuana task force. Let me tell you, uh, Michelle, Lieutenant Siggly and his group, Michael Grove, uh, the RMA Department, uh, County Council, Marilyn Kenoshita, what a job. What a job. We are hammering them in the fifth district, hammering them. Every time I go into a place now even to have lunch, somebody will come up to me and give me a new address for somebody, and I go out and we hammer them. So we want them to know, you're not wanted in Tulare County, and I think that's happening throughout the whole county, but in my district, I'm on top of them. I really appreciate all the help from those folks out there on an everyday basis, you're doing a great job. Also want to help the road, uh, tell the Roads Department, thank you for your help in my area. Johnny Wong, Terrabella Road Yard, uh, we've been able to fix some roads that I didn't think we were gonna get fixed, but people are very happy, and I get calls thanking us for, uh, making sure their roads are, are safe to drive. There's a bill right now in Congress, it's called, it's, uh, it's eight, it's, uh, fifteen twenty-six, which hopefully we're gonna get through, is a management for our national force to try to bring back some management in there, not just let everything go. And we're finding out what can happen in Northern California right now. We're finding out if there's no proactive, if nobody's out there tending to business, when you get a fire, it's catastrophic, it leaves nothing but moonscape. And let me tell you, folks, the redwoods will burn if you get enough heat on them. So, uh, this is very, very important, and so, uh, just like to thank everybody and all the agencies out there, Tulare County, I think you're doing a great job for us, so that's all I have, thank you.
Mike, you wanna thank anyone on the board for anything?
Well, I do. I want, you guys are a good group to work with. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, sure appreciate, appreciate your comments Supervisor. All right, I just want to go over a few things that are coming up. Um, actually, this Friday, uh, at seven-thirty in the morning, United Way will be having their community breakfast. Um, that should be another great event where they recognize those volunteers that really help the organization, uh, and help Tulare County communities. Um, the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority will be having a meeting, uh, next Friday, um, September sixth at eight AM, uh, here in these chambers, or in conference rooms A and B, depending on if they're available or not, right, Michelle? Um, we gotta get that all figured out, but, um, that meeting will be where we are setting the rates for the upcoming plan year. Uh, hopefully that will, uh, we will get some good news at that meeting, but I'm not sure. Um, next Saturday, we are going to have, uh, the community of Early Mart will be having their Health and Safety Fair. Uh, that's an annual event where we do get great participation from, uh, Tulare County agencies and other community organizations that really do a great job and offer a lot of resources to the residents of Early Mart. So looking forward to another great event. Um, and they, they stopped doing the salsa judging contest after Supervisor Cox judged that, uh, one event, so I wonder why.
Ambulance.
All right, and then, uh, also, uh, next Saturday evening, uh, United, well, United Way will be having a fundraising event, um, and that will go towards, uh, helping the organization provide funding for their programming. Um, and then lastly, I will say, I'm proudly wearing my UCLA tie. Um, UCLA opens up our season this Saturday, uh, against Nevada, so hopefully it's a, a good start for Bruin football this year. Um, and, uh, that's what I had to add, Mr. Ennis.
I just forgot, and this has nothing to do with UCLA, but I forgot one thing when I was talking.
Okay.
I want to thank Julieta Martinez for her help in setting up my, uh, opportunely meeting. All the resources showed up, including Caltrans, and we had a good turnout, and I think it was an excellent meeting, so, thank you, Julieta.
I, I think the UCLA sparks some conversation. Supervisor Ashida, you're leaning in again?
Yeah, I would say that maybe we need a few more of those ties for our road crew. To flag some cars down.
Okay, yeah, so I guess it's a little bright, sorry about that. All right. Hey, Supervisor Cox's tie is a little yellow, too, so.
Jerry Garcia.
All right, we're now gonna move on to, uh, the next item on our agenda, it's not quite nine-thirty yet. For, uh, item number four, we will move on now to our untimed, uh, portion of the meeting, uh, this morning. What's that? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we'll do, we'll take up our consent calendar first, and then we will move on to the untimed. Are there any items on the consent calendar that, uh, any board members would like to have pulled? Any items that any member of the public would like to have pulled from the consent calendar?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Uh, please vote. Motion passes unanimously to approve the consent calendar. Uh, we will now move on to our untimed, uh, portion of the agenda, uh, and take up item number thirty, which is a request from the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector to approve the rate of taxation of the state and county for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Rita.
Morning, Chairman Vanderpool, board members, Mr. Russo, Ms. I'm Rita Woodard, I'm the Tulare County Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector at the Courthouse Room one oh one E. I would first like to, uh, let you know of a promotion in our office, and introduce to you Ms. Sue Copeland here. Is now our chief of, of the Property Tax Division, who calculates these rates and keeps track of all the taxes for all of us all the time. So, uh, Sue's been in our office twelve years, and we're very happy to promote from within for this position that we had a retirement on. Okay, so, uh, today is the time fixed by law for levying the tax rate, uh, the rate of taxation for the state and county purposes for the fiscal year of two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Thank you. Um, the clerk handed out a revised schedules. There was a typo on Schedule C, and there are additional amounts on Schedule D, they are, uh, for informational purposes only, that won't be the ones that you are setting, but other people set. But it will be levied on our tax roll. We recommend this board approve the rate of taxation of the state and county for the fiscal year, be collected upon the taxable property of the county of Tulare, state of California, at the rate of one dollar per hundred dollars of assessed valuation, as shown on those attached schedules, as allowed by law, under Article thirteen of the California Constitution, and also Revenue and Taxation Code Sections ninety-three and one hundred. We further recommend this board or the tax rates as shown on those schedules, A, B, and C, be levied and directed to be collected upon each one hundred dollars valuation of the taxable property of the several school districts and special districts of said county, for raising the necessary amounts to pay the principal and interest on bonds, and for special purposes said districts, excuse me, as allowed by law, under Article thirteen of the Califor- California Constitution, and Revenue and Taxation Code Sections ninety-three and one hundred. All of these tax rates have been approved by the voters of Tulare County through past ballot measures. Schedule D tax rates are approved by other governing board, Board of Supervisors. We further recommend this board approve and accept the statement of valuation of the property in this county as compiled by the county auditor and filed with this board pursuant to Government Code Section fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five four A. For your information, last year's current tax rolls totaled three hundred sixty-eight million dollars plus in property taxes for all the schools, special districts, cities, and taxing agents in the county. Not a little bit of money we're playing with here for our taxpayers. So I would, uh, recommend you pass this resolution. And dance.
Okay, um, that is a, uh, request from the auditor, and if there are any questions from the board, uh, we can entertain them, and then we'll entertain any questions from the members of the public as well. Any questions from the board? Members of the public, any questions? Okay, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, yeah, I just, I, before you make your motion, Mike, I just comment that I, I, it's helpful that we have all this other information. I get calls every once in a while with people saying, how come my property taxes are so high? And they've forgotten about the fact that school district bonds and different bonds that people have passed are added to the property tax, and they're saying, well, why, you know, they're thinking that one percent of assessed valuation, but it can add a considerable amount of dollars to their property taxes, and they're coming from these other special elections. So, uh, it's helpful to have this information in front of them, in front of us, and point that out, I think, to the public, so.
When I started here about twenty-five years ago, those schedules were about a page long.
Yeah.
And now they're four pages long.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, and a second by Supervisor Worthley, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, Rita.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item number thirty-one, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to adopt a policy that anaerobic digester, electric generation facilities, and other, uh, other renewable energy projects are subject to a developer agreement. Mr. Washam. Where's your UCLA tie? Oh, yep, you got the cut.
I have my UCLA mug.
All right, go Bruins, lots of Bruins here today.
Good, good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Anaerobic digesters provide a, a variety of environmental and public health benefits, uh, greenhouse gas abatement, organic waste reduction, odor reduction, and pathogen destruction. Tulare County has recently been approached by, uh, companies interested in developing anaerobic digesters in conjunction with electrical generation. Uh, the requested action before you today is to help streamline the permit process, uh, by eliminating the time and, uh, expense of going before the board each time there's an agreement, uh, developer agreement associated with the digester. Just to summarize, this proposal would require developer agreement for all of these, uh, types of facilities. Uh, what it is essentially doing is extending what we already have in place for solar facilities in the county. Uh, the amount of annual revenue will be approximately, well, will be one, one thousand dollars per megawatt, uh, and the money collected will be, uh, collected to offset, uh, any public services involved in, in the facilities. And just to give you a little brief update of the solar projects, uh, related directly to the developer agreement, um, there's eighteen approved solar projects that are subject to development, uh, developer agreements. You know, if they're all constructed, it would result in an annual revenue of a hundred and eighty-one thousand per year. However, it's unlikely that every one will be completed, but, but that's the, the, uh, total possible, and we actually, actually have another eighty megawatts pending, so the potential could be almost a quarter million dollars a year. Um, currently, there are three of the projects have been completed, uh, resulting in eleven thousand, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars due. Invoices have been sent, and we've already received one back, uh, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. There's five projects currently under construction, which would result in twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars a year, and one project is coming in for building permits next week, and that's another five thousand. So therefore, i- in realistic numbers, by the end of fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, there should be a solid forty-two thousand dollars annual revenue stream off the solar projects via the developer agreements. Uh, that really concludes my, um, presentation, just recommend that the board, uh, accept this.
And, and Mike, one quick question, um, that doesn't include any revenue that's gained by the county for, um, sourcing the products here, correct?
No, the sales tax is, is a, is a separate agreement, and, uh, I, I was speaking with, uh, Don Watson from Imota, uh, who has, uh, got eight projects, actually ten, if you count Farmersville and Porterville, ten projects in the county approved. They're constructing four currently, and they're coming in with building permits next week. He's got sub-permits with the Board of Equalization, but those tax report, uh, tax returns and reporting won't be coming till later this, this next fall, this quarter, and the first quarter of next year, to actually start seeing the, the benefits and, and documenting what, what these investments mean to the county as far as sales tax re- use tax revenue. Uh, the project valuation for the Imota projects that they pulled permits thus far for the county is twenty-nine million dollars in valuation of what they're constructing right now.
Oh, great.
And another note, just another note on Imota, uh, I talked to Hector from Proteus. Uh, Imota has, has hired ninety, and they're, they're, they're going after another group of thirty employees that have gone through the Proteus, uh, Green Technology Training Pathway Program. So, uh, Imota has, uh, will have a total of a hundred and twenty, uh, employees through that training program.
That's great. Uh, any questions from board members?
Sure. I've got, back on the anaerobic digester, uh, generation facilities, I, I'm of the impression that these are the kind of things that would be built onsite dairies, or would these be off-site projects where they deliver product and then it's created, and then they power it to create?
The, the, normally, that, what we're looking at is, a lot of dairies are the obvious targets for, for this type of, uh, facility, and we have one currently in building permit stage right now for, um, one of the dairies that had an old digester, and they're upgrading with new technology. The other, there is another, uh, business model that could, uh, anaerobic digesters in, in themselves has a, have a large capital investment to, to create the digester. While an average-sized dairy could potentially produce one megawatt of, of energy just off of the dairy waste. To augment that and make it more feasible, if you were to supplement that waste stream, uh, you could boost maybe to two or three megawatts of production, and divert some waste that would normally be going to a landfill, could be diverted to that. So that, there's a potential for that in, in this. We don't have anything, uh, in it as far as an application or anything, but that's something that could be potentially, and then that benefits, uh, greenhouse gases. be potentially, and then that benefits greenhouse gases and diverts from landfills to that. So that could be something in the future as well.
Do you anticipate that this would be something that if they brought in extraordinary amounts of material from other farms, but they would be located on existing dairies? Or would there be standalone type of projects that would be on a separate piece of property?
Right now, there's no proposals for standalone. Obviously, there has been discussion of maybe doing more of a regional, if there's a cluster of dairies that are located very close to, maybe locating on one dairy and others feeding in or an area between the dairies. But there's nothing permanent. That could be potential. All these things would obviously be going through a permitting process, use permit, PC, and sequoia analysis.
Any other questions from board members? Supervisor Cox.
That's what I, you just answered my question. I want to make sure we weren't providing a streamlined process here. What we're looking at today is just a developer agreement and the, let's see what the name, what you called the, yeah, the standard developer agreement. We're not looking at any projects today. We're just looking at the agreement.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Members of the public, any questions? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Cox and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Washam. Go Bruins, I agree. All right, now since it is nine-thirty, we will return to our timed portion of our meeting and we will take up a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to continue the public hearing from May twenty-first, 2013, for the adoption of fee adjustments for the Environmental Health Division for fiscal year 2013-2014. Tim.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tim Lutz, Director of Fiscal Operations for Health and Human Services. And we're here today to hopefully bring closure to the public hearings that began on April thirtieth for the proposed fee changes to the Environmental Health Services fee schedule. First of all, though, on behalf of Dr. Dirksen, the Health and Human Services Agency Director, Jason Britt, the Public Health Director, and myself, we want to apologize for the confusion that has resulted from both the initial lack of stakeholder input in the fee change request, as well as inconsistent direction that the community has expressed that has been previously provided by the Environmental Health Services Division. Certainly, that wasn't our intent, but it became loud and clear that it was a genuine problem. However, we do feel confident that at the end of the day, this process has yielded a much better result because we were able to slow down, go back, engage the stakeholders. And we feel that we've really rebuilt a foundation with the community that we can continue to build upon in subsequent years. So ultimately, although it was unfortunate that it, you know, came up the way that it did, I think things turned out for the better on the long run. Also, we would like to thank members of the board for your patience, as well as the various community groups that we've worked with throughout the last few months, because this has been a long process with a lot of information sharing and a lot of, we're not certain, we can come back and look at it. So it has required a lot of patience from both the board and the members of the community and we really appreciate that patience. For the presentation, we'll have it with two sequences. First, I'd like to ask Helen Herrera, a member of our community outreach team, to come up, kind of give an overview of the stakeholder process that we went through, and then I'll come back up and kind of summarize for our next steps.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board, and CAO, County Council, and Madam Clerk. As Tim stated, my name is Helen Herrera. I'm with Tulare County Health. And would also like to recognize our temporary food facility vendors, organizers, community leaders, and caterers and restaurateurs in the audience this morning.
Helen, would you pull the microphone a little bit closer?
So I can, thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to speak to our public outreach efforts on behalf of HHSA. Through July through August, we've held a series of meetings in each district. Each meeting was geared towards listening sessions to receive key feedback from our temporary food facilities. Feedback was centered around three topics. Those topics included experience with environmental health and client services, the permit fee process and any potential impacts to that fee, as well as any recommendations to continue dialogue and outreach within the public. Those meetings were wrapped up with a summary meeting that was held at the AgriCenter last week and we received additional feedback there as well. I think it's important to point out that our public outreach around these meetings in terms of public notification consisted of outreach through our media outlets. We also used our social media, our new website, as well as emails, and then we used a little bit of old-school US mail and made some phone calls to do the outreach. In terms of comments overall, overarching for each district meeting, those consisted of a need for consistent, clear communication from Environmental Health Services, continued need for education and outreach in both English and Spanish, and really clarity around a defined permit fee structure for temporary food facilities. There's also a need for clarification for, on California retail health and safety codes related to TFFs. And then in addition to that, there seems to be some movements around an advisory committee that is taking a look at community events and how they relate to temporary food facilities. In addition, additional comments, if I may, consisted of community members and stakeholders that were happy with Environmental Health Services and how they run currently, as well as a need for consideration of TFF business hours when conducting public outreach, and an appreciation for HHSA's public outreach efforts and inclusion of stakeholders in the decision-making process. I'd like to now turn it back to our Director of Fiscal Operations, Tim Lutz, to speak to two key area items that were brought up, and those were nonprofits and prepackaged foods and their relation to our health and safety codes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe you all have summary comments too with the packet that was provided that gives a little more depth. I just wanted to add that piece when you go through and if not, we'll be happy to get those over to you, but I believe that they were provided to you, just in case you want to see some more detail on some of those items that Helen highlighted. The real key pieces that we wanted to talk about was, in addition to engaging our community stakeholders, we worked very closely with County Council to try and gain much greater clarity on the retail food code. Unfortunately, the way the retail food code is written is often ambiguous and provides some discretion to the local enforcement agency in some areas, less discretion in others. And so what happens then is that's where you start to mix program policy with what the retail food code comes in. So we tried to separate those out and see which ones are policy changes, which ones can we, you know, kind of change our existing practices or go back to previous practices. And I know this was particularly important for a number of concerns that were raised by both your board and members of the community, and again regarding nonprofits, veterans exemption to a lesser extent, and prepackaged food. The first item really relates to charging a vendor permit per location. That was one of the things that actually came up first to the board during the April thirtieth public hearing. Following the May twenty-first meeting, we suspended that practice within Environmental Health Services and went back to the model that was in place prior to that where we're just charging one permit for that particular temporary food facility vendor. And that is a much more streamlined process. Unilaterally, the community said that's the way they wanted to see it and it does make sense and it requires less administrative work on both our side and the community's side. The second piece is on the nonprofits and that obviously has been a major area of concern on which nonprofits need to pay fees at what types of events. And what we did then is went in, looked at careful review of the retail food code, identified an exemption where qualifying nonprofits can conduct four, up to four, free events per year without any inspections or permits. And I know that was a very happy news to a lot of our nonprofits as we went through that process and talked about it last week. We're currently finalizing an exemption form that will be used by Environmental Health Services that would then be filled out by those nonprofits. We shared that with the stakeholder group last week to try and garner their input on the form because this is a work in progress. We're still clarifying areas of concern. The reaction was positive, but there was still some definite uncertainty expressed. And so moving forward, we recognize that we need to address all of those unresolved areas and we'd like to then develop a work group. And we're hoping to get that work group together probably mid-September, once the fair ends. That way, everybody who might be out at the fair has a chance to, you know, go do business. But we'd like to engage the nonprofit organizations, capture those remaining questions that are out there, develop a, you know, more comprehensive form and guidelines for the nonprofits. So that's going to be an ongoing thing for us until we feel that everything has been resolved completely. In reference to the veterans exemption, some people raised the question whether or not the veterans were exempt from fees. We clarified that there is an exemption process for an honorably discharged veteran, provided that form to the community group, also providing the form on the Environmental Health website and when they come into the front counter so that it's easily accessible to somebody coming in. The last item was prepackaged foods. We recognize that this has been a real frustration point for the community, particularly when they're selling a prepackaged item like a bottle of water, bag of nuts, that has already gone through a different facility. Unfortunately, the retail food code actually does specifically put nonpackaged foods in the regulations, so that does limit some of our flexibility. What we are looking at, though, is certainly if a business is providing prepackaged foods and is either a nonprofit organization or working at a nonprofit event that qualifies for that aforementioned exemption, they would be able to hand out those items or, you know, sell those items under that exemption, again, assuming they meet all the criteria and it's less than four events per year. We recognize, though, that doesn't encompass everyone and so what we're doing is continuing to do our homework on options available to us, the least of which would likely be a new fee that comes back that's a reduced, very, you know, small fee to kind of cover the quick review and a permit for that facility, but isn't a, isn't as large scope as our current fees for people that are, you know, cooking meals like potentially hazardous foods out of their, out of their temporary facility. We'll be reconnecting with the community partners to review the options that we come up with and make sure that they're on board. We're also working with specific vendors right now on a case-by-case basis for events that are coming up before we can bring that back to the board. One specific one that comes to mind is, of course, the International AgriCenter and their concerns on some of the giveaways that they have during the event when it comes up. And I don't know that everything will be resolved by that point, so we'll be working with them on a case-by-case basis. In closing, I first wanted to make the request that the board approve the withdrawal for the fee request that was put forward on April thirtieth. What we would like to do instead is keep the existing fee structure in place and then in April of 2014, when the next typical cycle for fee adjustments come through, we would like to bring together a different type of a fee package. This one would allow us to do a better analysis of the Environmental Health Services program, identify a fee structure that works better for the community, and reengage that community stakeholder process. Because that does take time, we recognize that it would be premature to try and do anything like that at this point. And then moving forward, Helen alluded to the fact that we'd really like to develop a community event advisory committee. The goal of that advisory committee would be to bring in a number of community partners from the chambers, other nonprofit groups, restaurants, and that would allow us to get more direct feedback on a continual basis as well as the board through presentations on kind of the activities and processes that we've been going through. So long-term, that's kind of the direction that Environmental Health Services is leaning. And then just closing, I would again like to thank the board, again, for your patience, as well as the community stakeholders for their input through this process. It's certainly been a tremendously valuable experience to us and I think has set a model for Health and Human Services overall in moving forward on engaging stakeholders for any fee adjustments.
All right, I know I want to involve public comment as well right now, but before that, if anyone would like to make any specific comments, please do so Supervisor Worthley.
Look, I just want to say oftentimes these challenges present opportunities. I think this is a good example of that where we've learned a lot from this and I think it will help us going forward. My question was, I knew we, I thought we dealt with those folks who had paid under the old adopted system before we went back. We're now going back to the, to the original one. Was there a reimbursement that we did for those folks?
Yes, I apologize for that, I should have mentioned. We did go out and identify everyone who had double-paid issued refunds for the per-location charges. And at any of the community events we were at, we stressed again, if there's anybody we somehow missed, please contact us through, we set up a specific email address, a specific phone number, as well as my contact information, Helen's information.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis.
Thank you, Tim, for your outreach and we're looking forward to the collaboration between all of our communities to work with Health and Human Services to see if we can get this thing squared away and wherever body, it's a win-win for everybody. So appreciate all your efforts that you went out and did all this and so, thank you so much.
And then I'll just say too, I think that this effort, although it arose out of a situation that was quite uncomfortable at the time, I think this was a great exercise and it actually serves as a model for all of the county departments and agencies that have to do with direct interaction with the public as to how to do things, how to make changes, how to impose new fees, or to talk about adjustments to their programs. This is a great way to reach out and collect public input to formulate the policy going forward, so I think it was a great effort. At this time, I'd like to open it up to any members of the public that would wish to come forward and comment. I know we have a few stakeholders that are in the audience that have been a part of this process from the beginning and if they would like to have any comments, please come forward and state your name and address. I knew we'd have at least one taker. You came all the way from Porterville, Donette.
I did, I made it just in time. Donette Silva-Carter, representing the Porterville Chamber of Commerce, Chairman Vanderpool and members of the Board of Supervisors. I just want to thank you for the process and also to thank the department. I think a lot of good information has come through this process and we look forward to the opportunity to continue to be involved. There have been some leadership changes as well, which we applaud the department on the change and I think that we are seeing a great reasonableness that's being employed through this process and as we move forward. So thank you again for listening to the stakeholders whom you represent and thank you to everybody with the division for all of the work that they have done too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I will bring it back to the board for any further comments or action.
Motion approved.
I do have a, one request for comment.
I'll second that along with the, a quick comment. You know, the, there were good intentions here all along. I mean, because the, the Health Department does have a job to do and that's to ensure the, the safety of the public. Did get a little out of hand, but I think the process did well. But this, this doesn't exempt you from, whether you're a nonprofit or whatever, doesn't exempt you from not handling food properly and making sure you don't, you know, make the public sick. So I, I think this, uh, that needed to be said. There's still, you know, you just can't go out and do whatever you want. You still need to abide by the rules. There's just not going to be someone standing over you with a baseball bat if you don't.
All right. So we have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move on to our untimed items that we have remaining. Uh, and we'll take up item number 32, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize zone change initiation, PZI 13-003, to proceed with the zone change. Mr. Spata. No Bruin tie?
My son went to UCLA.
Okay. You're not wearing a tie, though, so I just thought I would.
I apologize.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Spata, RMA Planning. It's a pleasure to be before you today to present this item, which is entitled, "The Cassidy-Ivanhoe Change of Zone Initiation, PZI 13-003." In terms of an overview, this is a request for a change of zone from exclusive ag 80, 80-acre minimum to exclusive ag 20-acre minimum on a 39.66-acre parcel within the Rural Valley Lands Plan. The applicant is Herman in Virginia Cassidy. The project intent and purpose is to continue farming operations. The location is one-quarter mile west of Road 188, two miles east of Ivanhoe near Venice Hill. Here is an aerial photograph. The subject property is this square-like figure. And it's 40 acres, but as you can see, moving from right to left, there, there is one, two, three, four 20-acre parcels, which indicates that it is consistent with the neighborhood. And as I'll show you on the next slide, even the parcels to the north and to the west are zoned AE20. So this would be wholly consistent with the character of the area. Here's an example. This is AE80, AE20. Uh, the proposal is AE20. And then, all of this is AE20, AE20 to the top, and then also down the right corner of the map. In terms of general plan consistency, this project is wholly consistent with the general plan. Designation is Valley Agriculture, specifically intensive agriculture use, which requires a 10-acre minimum lot size. When applying the RV LP analysis, it's not required because the proposed parcels will remain over 10 acres and the site is prime agriculture and the intended uses are to continue agriculture. Uh, in terms of the project timeline, uh, the, uh, project applications for this PZI, as well as the change of zone, were filed on July 9th. Today, the BOs Zone Initiation is before you. Tomorrow, the Planning Commission, if this matter is approved by you, will hear the recommendation to approve the change of zone. And it will be back before your Board for first reading on September 10th and then final reading and public hearing on September 24th. By the same token, uh, the same day, starting with August 28th through September 24th, the Planning Commission will hear the Terabella Medical Clinic and that project will be before you on September 10th and September 24th. Both projects indicate the reaching of our internal timeline to process a zone change within 90 days or less. Therefore, our recommendation is that RMA respectfully requests that the Board of Supervisors take the following action. To authorize a zone change initiation, PZI 13-003, Cassidy-Ivanhoe, to proceed with a zone change from AE80 exclusive ag 80-acre minimum to AE20 exclusive ag 20-acre minimum for the lot known as Assessor's Parcel Number 110-050-026. Let me say, Mr. Chairman, in conclusion, I'd like to thank Project Planner Chuck Przewinski for his excellent work in this project. And also, I believe Mr. Herman Cassidy is in the audience. And although this is not a public hearing, I believe he'd like to make a brief word with your permission. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Cassidy goes forward, I, I just wanted to say, I met with Mr. Cassidy at, at our offices here and referred him back to RMA. Mike was handing out a lot of accolades to our county people. I would like to do the same. I think that this is a, a, a wonderful opportunity for our folks to step up in RMA to help assist a private property owner with his dilemma and still meet the, I think, the, the, the intention of our, our zoning laws, our, our protection of agricultural properties. Nothing is being, as I understand it, is being jeopardized by what we're doing here today. Another thing I was going to add is that as you look at that map, usually our AE80 type of designation are for grazing lands. And if you notice that the large parcel that is the, a part of Venice Hills, which is to the west of this property, is grazing property, but this is agricultural property, which is intensively farmed. Generally, that is not zoned AE80, but it's more frequently in the AE20, AE40 designation. So I, I just want to thank our staff for being, um, how to, how to solve a problem. They really stepped forward here, presented a, a solution to a problem that was presented and the support, I would encourage our, our board to support this action today.
Great. Mr. Cassidy, would you like to make a few comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Herman Cassidy, 32801, Road 188 Visaya, California. And I want to express my appreciation for the opportunity to, for the board to hear the matter that I've requested. Uh, I believe I've pretty well expressed my position in the documentation that I've provided and I'm not going to be redundant in going over that. My main, um, purpose for being here today is to thank you for the opportunity for this request and also thank, uh, Mr. Mike Spata, Chuck, and Jason with the Resource Management Agency for the unusually great job that they've done in pursuing this and trying to be a partner in solving problems. And I, uh, through the seventies and eighties, was a general contractor here in the Visaya-Tulare area. And the attitude of the county personnel has significantly changed, in my opinion, as to being problem solvers rather than, uh, using, uh, other methods of trying to, uh, at least appear from our side, at my side, to make things difficult. So primarily, that's my purpose, is to thank you and the Resource Management Agencies for the great job in presenting. They have done an excellent job in presenting in the documentation what my position is. And if, uh, whatever the result is, I will continue thanking them for that effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to comment regarding this item? If not, I will bring it back to the board for action.
Chairman, move approval.
I have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. The next item that we're going to be taking up this morning is item number 33. It's a request from the County Administrative Office to provide direction to staff regarding the issuance of 10 encroachment permits. Mr. Hess, and you do need to raid, raise the microphone.
That's right, if I can real quickly. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Hess with the County Administrative Office. First, before I begin the presentation, I would like to mention that the agenda item mistakenly stated that we are seeking board direction on this matter. I want to clarify that staff is not seeking any board direction at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is purely an informational presentation to the board and the public regarding recent updates on the high-speed rail project and the impacts in Tulare County. And after the presentation, there will be no action necessary from the board. So with that, there's about two or three items to provide as an update this morning. And, uh, the first is that the county has received 10 encroachment permits and well-application permits from Greg Drilling Incorporated to perform geotechnical work in support of the high-speed rail project within Tulare County. This work is proposed to take place in the county's right-of-way in the, in, on road shoulders. The purpose of this geotechnical work is to conduct cone penetration bore drill sampling for site investigation. The data collected by, uh, the engineers and by, um, the drilling company will be used for engineering documents in the future. The maximum drilling depth of these 10, uh, proposed drillings will be 80 to 150 feet. And Michelle, I actually have a map that I'd like to throw up here if possible. Thank you. The map on the screen shows the proposed intersections in the vicinity of where these, uh, these drillings are going to be taking place. A little fuzzy on the screen there. The, uh, engineering firm wanted me to mention, as I show this map, that the drilling locations do not correspond with any final choice of alignment as, on the, on the behalf of the authority. Greg Drilling Incorporated is a subcontractor to a joint venture that includes three companies, URS, Hatchmont-McDonald, and ARUP. These three companies have entered into a contract with the High-Speed Rail Authority to perform a wide variety of services for this project. Another subcontractor, in addition to Greg, Greg Drilling Incorporated, GeoVision Incorporated, will be providing geophysical services during testing, not geotechnical, as stated in the staff report. Staff at RMA and HSSA are currently reviewing the 10 well permit and encroachment permit applications. If approved by staff, this work would begin in early September after the Seawood document has been certified. Greg Drilling and ARUP Engineering will not be conducting outreach to the neighboring property owners while they are drilling, as this work will be conducted in the county right-of-way. These companies will have-
John, excuse me real quick. I hate to interrupt you, but it is 10 o'clock and I did, uh, indicate that I would like this board to stop our meeting where we, wherever we are at for a moment of silence and recognition and in honor of, of Visaya CHP Officer Magdalena, who, uh, lost his life recently. Uh, we are not able to attend the services this morning because of this meeting, but I would like to stop the presentation for a moment of silence. Hess, let's all please bow our heads and remember his service to our community. Appreciate everyone's cooperation with that.
So, um, Greg Drilling and ARUP Engineering will not be conducting outreach to the neighboring and adjacent property owners that are going to be around the drilling areas, as this will take place in county right-of-way. The companies will have traffic cones in the work areas to indicate to drivers of the work being done. The engineering phase that's part of this, that this drilling is taking place in, will be complete in spring 2014, next spring. And it's anticipated that the Central Valley section, defined by the authority as Merced to Bakersfield, could begin construction somewhere in summer or fall of next year. In addition to our county, they're working through other Central Valley counties in the same geotechnical phase. And Fresno County approved these encroachment permits and drilling is currently underway there. Kern County, I was, I was notified, actually last Friday, approved the, uh, encroachment permits for this work down there. And so, they will begin drilling shortly. In Kings County, um, the county denied the issuance of these permits on the basis that the project does not conform with the Kings County General Plan document. In addition to this drilling work, uh, the Resource Management Agency has been working with the High-Speed Rail Authority to draft an agreement, uh, that would be presented to the board in a couple, few weeks, probably in September. This agreement would allow for the county to provide engineering and public work services to the authority during the design phase of the project. These types of services may include, uh, reviewing plans on the behalf of the county, reviewing the state's plans, and then providing access to the authority and their engineers to our county documents, our road documents, those sorts of things. The intent and purpose of that agreement is to minimize the disruption of the county's road system as a result of the high-speed rail project and to provide reimbursement to the county for staff time associated with these reviews that would be taking place. And then, finally, just a little brief, uh, update on what's going on statewide for the, uh, project. The project, as you know, was approved by the voters in 2008 as Prop 1A. The proposition authorized the issuance of $9.95 billion in bonds for the project. And in addition, there have been $3.2 billion of federal funds allocated to the project. Since it was approved, the project has gone, undergone several challenges in court and otherwise. And on August 16th, 2013, a Sacramento County Superior Court Judge ruled that the High-Speed Rail Authority failed to comply with the project's financial and environmental requirements as approved by the voters. The court, uh, stated that these provisions require the authority to identify all of the funding for the entire first segment of the project, which they defined as Merced to the San Fernando Valley near, in Los Angeles, and receive all environmental clearances prior to beginning construction. That first segment is 290 miles and is estimated to be, uh, between $24 billion and $31 billion. The entire statewide project, north to south, may cost anywhere between $68 and $99 billion. The Sacramento County Superior Court Judge, Michael Kenny, who issued the ruling, did not immediately put a halt or a stop to the project, but there is going to be a further review, a further hearing, is my understanding, as to the project's future. So that concludes my presentation regarding this matter. And so, open it up for board discussion.
This is an informational item, but I will ask any board members if they have any comments.
I have a question. Uh, since this is geotechnical information that's being sought and it's being done on our public right-of-way, will that information ever be made available to our county?
I, I do not know. I will check with the, uh, engineering firm.
I, I would think that ought to be some sort of a conditional, um, approval because it is our, on our property and it seems like we would want to have that information for ourselves.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
In regard to the permit approval process, your board has, some time ago, authorized a particular, uh, process. It is a ministerial process. So, um, we certainly can require any information that is already in the process itself, but beyond that, we are not able to, uh, ask for that information.
Any other supervisors like to make comments? Supervisor Ashida?
On the map, is that on the BNSF alignment?
The encroachment permits are listed mostly in the, the vicinity of Highway 43.
I understand that, but is that on the BNSF alignment?
I'm not sure.
43 goes along the BNSF.
I don't know. I can check with the, the firm.
Well, to me, anytime we build a road, we have to have a right-of-way to begin with before we do any testing or whatever. It's just a way to spend more money on a project that doesn't have a, a, a firm route of where it's going to be. But other than that, they can drill wherever they want to drill. I mean, they're asking for, for the, the, uh, okay to, to do test boring, which is along our right-of-way, it's fine with me.
Supervisor Ennis?
I'm inclined to be against it because I don't agree with the high-speed rail. I think it's the biggest boondoggle in the history of California. So, uh, no, I wouldn't vote for it.
Okay, well, again, this is just an informational item and I will remind you of that. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. And I would just make a comment. Thank you for the presentation, John. Uh, it's important to me, uh, as a county supervisor, and I think to this board, um, that we are very transparent with the information and, uh, we are keeping members of Tulare County public informed as to what's going on in our backyard. Um, this has not been a very transparent process in terms of informing adjacent land owners or, uh, members of the public about what is going on with the high-speed rail project. So I think it is important for us to do so. So, thank you for that.
Just one more comment. My, my reason for asking about the, uh, geotechnical information is that I believe that that is valuable information for us, for our road department. And so, that's why I would say there's still a lot of value to it. Everybody knows my position on the high-speed rail. Uh, I am a Ginnit. Uh, but, but I think there would be some value to us of having that information if there, if this testing is, is taken and, and put into place.
Okay.
We can certainly request the information and presumably it would be something that would be provided. It may even be a public record, uh, of the states. But, um, if it's not something that we do within the usual permit process, we can't request it of the condition of the permit.
Supervisor Ashida?
I want to make it clear that, uh, this board in the past has, has voted in opposition of this project. As far as I'm concerned, I'm still in opposition of the project, but I'm not in opposition for them to drill tests, uh, test bores on some proposed route.
Yeah. And, and I do think that the, uh, judge in Sacramento got it right in, uh, requiring that the environmental and also the, um, financing pieces be resolved before, uh, construction actually happens. So, you know, there's a lot of missing pieces that need to be found before this project would have- project would have, I think, the support of a lot of Central Valley entities, but it doesn't really matter, I don't think. I think they're going to be moving forward regardless, so.
Chairman, one last comment. This weekend, they'll be having the grand opening, or maybe it's next weekend, of the bridge across the bay. That project was six times the budget, in other words, what it was expected to cost. If anybody thinks that they're going to build this 290-mile segment for $24 to $31 billion, I think you could probably multiply that by six and be closer to reality, especially getting into San Fernando Valley, because it requires you to cross the hatchet piece. So I think we're still, we understand, recognize that this is a huge boondoggle as a project, but that's really not relevant to our conversation today.
All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you for the staff report, John. Appreciate it. The last item on our open session agenda today is item number 34. That's a request from the Resource Management Agency's Planning Branch regarding substandard building abatement activity during fiscal year 2012, 2013. Mr. Spata. (laughing) Microphone's a little tall for you.
Hey, you need Barbara Boxer.
Can you see me now? Again, Mike Spata, I remain planning. This morning, we have an agenda item entitled Substandard Abatement Activity Report by the Building and Housing Division. My part of the presentation will be very brief. In terms of an overview of what we will discuss with you today, there are seven parts. The first is to outline for you the code enforcement framework at RMA to give you context. The next aspect is to discuss briefly the abatement activity funding. The third item is abatement activity that occurred last fiscal year. The fourth item is abatement activity that is proposed for this fiscal year. And then the fifth item is future abatement activity in terms of a list given to you in Attachment C, where it identifies approximately 52 sites of future activity that could be subject to substandard abatement. In addition, there will be a number of photographs that show you what was abated last year, and also a very important special project that is being worked on by a number of agencies at this time. And then finally, a discussion of next steps will occur. I will handle items one and two, and then our building official, Dennis Lehman, will take you the rest of the way. To give you context, the RMA code enforcement framework is composed of four types of enforcement. The first one is building and zoning enforcement, with which you are very familiar. Another type of enforcement is employee housing. Abandoned vehicle is another type of enforcement, and the final type of enforcement is substandard building abatement. And all of those enforcement activities are within the code enforcement program, within the Building and Housing Division. For background purposes, the definition of a substandard building is any building which endangers the life, limb, health, property, safety, or welfare of the public or occupants, and that's deemed to be a substandard building by our Health and Safety Code. All right, in terms of funding, as indicated in the staff report, for the past two fiscal years, for each year, there's been an appropriation of $50,000 to carry out what we describe as the general substandard abatement program. Attachment A in your packet delineates eight sites that had been completed last year, which on average cost about $8,000. The next item on the slide here is what we describe as a special substandard abatement program, and based upon a report that had been developed by the Sheriff's Department, there are a number of what we would characterize public nuisance conditions on various sites throughout the county, which would demand additional attention, if you will, because of the very serious public nuisance condition that is on that property. And Dennis will walk you through one of those serious abatement sites. The typical abatement costs, which are delineated in Attachment A, are title search fees, about $500, administrative fees, and the lion's share of the cost is actual demolition removal by contractors, which are subject to an informal bid process. So that basically covers the general framework, the funding, and now Dennis will take you the rest of the way, unless you have questions regarding specific cases.
Supervisor Cox?
One quick question. A few years ago, we went through a process, found out we'd not been leaning properties correctly after we expended funds on them. Have we straightened that process out to where we're placing the liens on the property as we do this to recover our costs if it ever sells? Are we, is there a process in place where we go back and perfect our liens on a timely basis required by law? Have we fixed our house?
The answer in general is yes, we have fixed our house. The essence of those liens to which you're referring, Mr. Cox, basically were the result of administrative hearings that resulted in orders by the hearing officer, and then they were subject to a lien, and that's where the problem really developed. This one is more of a statutory lien whereby if these costs are incurred, they may be placed on the property tax rolls, but as indicated in the staff report, we're following a dual approach here, one which has garnered some degree of success last fiscal year. For example, the last two or three months, we were able to acquire approximately $25,000 in actual recovery, either through settlements or litigation, because we've worked very closely with county council, who's provided us outstanding service by going to small claims court. And as a result of receiving the letter from county council, either a settlement has been reached, or a trial has occurred, in which case there has been a judgment. So the lien process is available, but we're looking for a quicker and faster way in order to get financial enforcement. If we see that it's not working, we'll lien it, and then it will go through the property tax system. So we're being very proactive on the litigation front, as well as on the lien front.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. I'm Dennis Lehman. I'm Building and Housing Manager for Tulare County, and I run the substandard abatement program for the county. We have several reports in here, but last year, we tore down eight homes. We bid these out, we get four or five bids to come in these, and the bids are spread all over. They generally come anywhere from about $6,000 to about $12,000. We do have releases from the airboard to go ahead and tear these down. Most of the ones that we're referring to today that we've tore down are what we call low-hanging fruit. Okay, they burnt. They burnt, they've been run into by cars, they've been abandoned for years and years, and pretty much most of the recyclables have been taken out of them. But we have tore down 12 of them, excuse me, eight of them, and we have eight more for this next year that we have queued up. We had a little bit of extra money in the budget last year. Sorry about that. We had a little extra money in the budget last year, so what we've done is we've done all of our title searches ahead of time so we can move. We're getting ready to move on one right now. It is bid, and we are getting ready to carry that one out. Next slide. I believe I'm going the wrong way. There we go. It's actually the map of where our hits are, and the blacks are complete, the reds are in progress, and the blues are pending. We have eight complete, eight pending, and 52, excuse me, we have eight complete, eight in progress, and 52 pending. And you can see, they're fairly well distributed, although Mr. Cox is lacking a little bit in his area. We need to pick that up, I suspect. But we've tried to spread the wealth as we've gone through and completed these demos.
I'm sure the City of Visalia would love to have you come in and take care of their issues.
I'm sure they would. That was in the past. I have some before and after photos I'd like to show here, and this was a house that was moved in, and the owner passed away during the move-in process. It was actually condemned in '01. We tore it down last year. It had a fire after it got moved in. It was never completed, it was never occupied. A mover had the house and moved it in. He would go out and buy homes and move them. We went out, we got the bids and what have you, and it was kind of interesting. These always come with other things, and what this one came with is we got the bid, and we got the equipment out there, and there had been a water leak, and the equipment was actually going to sink. It had no stability to hold heavy equipment, dozers, loaders, trucks, what have you. So we worked with Brett Fussell from the public work side, and we actually got the leak fixed, and let the site dry out and come back on. It's not just one thing. I wish it was, it would be simple, but it is always something else, and this is what we left you. We had a total of $6,622, and that includes administrative costs. And on your Exhibit A, you'll see our administrative costs in there. The next item that we did here, we tore this one down in Porterville, and it had been burnt. You can see, we get exemptions from the airboard, fairly clean, fairly easy for us to do. This one was how it is supposed to work. What we have here is this house was tore down. That was the level lot, and within four months, the lot was purchased. We have a new unit on there. It's back in the tax roll. It is a positive place instead of a negative place. I like to think we made an opportunity. We've been paid back.
Dennis, I was going to ask, what was that lot sold for?
You know, I don't know. I only cared about the $5,699, because that came to me, and then I issued the permit for it.
So we did recover it, though?
We recovered, full recovery cost in this, including the abatement cost, the administrative cost, all of our costs were included in there and returned to us. We had a lien on it, and it went through escrow, and before the lot would even clear, or at the time it cleared, to the new owner, we got our payment back.
Thank you.
A report has come out quite some time ago, and we affectionately refer to it as the Kimlinger Report, and Sergeant Kevin Kimlinger did that, and he's quite a fellow, and we've had a real good time working with him. But we've selected a site off the Kimlinger Report. Let's give us the dirtiest, the nastiest place you could possibly get. This was a place my inspectors were afraid to go, and we only went into it with sheriffs. And oftentimes, the sheriffs kind of said, well, let's have two go, because it was that kind of a place. And not only does it require extra services, but we also have the fire department there, because the people are burning things. This is the equivalent to a human litter box, and-
Where is this?
It's at 1520 East Success.
Mike's district chief. (laughing) We got to where, we've had special meetings with Sergeant Kimlinger, we've visited the
site, we've done all kinds of things there, and did our paperwork. We even had a nice visit with Mr. Rousseau, who agreed to help fund the project out of some special funds. We took the project out to bid. We had bids everywhere, anywhere from $60,000 to clean this up. It's an acre, a little over. We had bids from $60,000, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, to $11,500. We chose the $11,500 bid. We're getting ready to move through- Remember, there's no administrative costs there. So we chose that. Lo and behold, we let the bid out, and the property owner passes away. So we are kind of back to square one. However, we do have someone who's trying to buy this. We are with them, and they actually own a recycling business, and they're willing to go ahead and take this. This is full of needles, feces. We wear rubber boots that sometimes we almost want to throw them away after we leave the site, they're that bad. But here's some continuing there, living in these conditions here. The place with the dartboard that you see in the back is actually the shower, and drained right into the ground. Adjacent to that, right behind it, was actually a privy over a hole in the ground. No sewer lines, no anything of that nature. Tires. This is what it looked like from the front. We spent a lot of time out there, we've inventoried this, but we do believe we have a person who wants to buy it, and it is taking a little bit of time. The owner of the properties, next of kin, is incarcerated, and so we're trying to dig through all of that. These aren't easy. They take a long time. We're dealing with people who have limited vocabularies, limited thought processes, and sometimes we look at this, and this is normal, but we would like to have a special process that we go through identifying the crime and cleaning up these sites. The neighbors are ecstatic that we are out there. However, we have had to tap on the brakes. I don't want to expend the $20,000 from you, Mr. Rousseau, and not have a recovery method for it back.
Dennis, can we schedule you for many future presentations? You're very eloquent.
Thank you. Well, that's not my goal, but, you know, our whole goal was just to receive some feedback from you. We had one last week as well. Mr. Rousseau, you were very eloquent on television, and I hope that you all got to see last, a week ago Fridays, Channel 26. And the interesting thing is, is that how people behave in these situations. I'm sure the television reporter was somewhat taken back when they said, let's go get the shotgun on camera. And so those are the things that we kind of run into. I would like to thank several people on the staff that have worked in these. Hector Ramos is sitting back here. The guy's a trooper. He speaks Spanish, he's been out there on Saturdays. We have been condemning homes and having the electrical pulled out of them, and we have worked with them. Hector has worked with them to have them move on Saturdays. Two weeks ago, he had two days off that he didn't have, because he worked the whole time. We went out and got our first warrant and did that. And Glenn McIntyre is responsible for doing all of the bids. He's a Building Inspector, Building and Zoning Inspector III with the county, and Maria Flores does all the paperwork. And here we go, the one in 1520 Success. We did the paperwork, and now we're going to do it again, because the gentleman deceased, 53 years old. But we're here to receive some feedback from Supervisor CIO. We want to continue the general subabatement program, and receive direction just regarding the special abatements, and I'm certainly willing to visit you, Mr. Rousseau, when we pick them out. They kind of rise to their own occasion.
At the bottom.
You know, we start getting the phone calls, the phone rings off the hook, that's the one we're picking. It picked itself. I have to tell you, we have a target-rich environment. If you've looked through the Kimlinger Report, you can take a look there and see what we have, so.
Well, Dennis, real quick, let me start off the comments real fast, and I just want to say a real compliment to you and your staff. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, and, you know, this board and me as a person realize how difficult dealing with some of these conditions and situations can and definitely will be, but you and your staff have shown tremendous strength and really gone about your jobs in cleaning up the county in a remarkable way. I think it's just fantastic and real kudos to you. I know how difficult it may be, but I definitely, I think this is a great program that we have going on. I mean, you said that this is a target-rich county, and I think that's a very nice way of putting it, without getting too explicit. There's a lot of areas that need some attention, and you are doing that, you're giving these sites attention, and you're cleaning up these communities, although it might be rather slow to start, it does take money, and that's why this guy is very important here, to make sure you find those little pockets of money. But, you know, you're making life better for neighbors, you're making life better for people that drive through these communities, and you're making life safer for the many different county departments that interact with these sites, whether it's code enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, environmental health. There are many different entities that will touch these properties at some point in their existence, and this program makes it so much easier for them and safer for them to do their job. I think we have to look at the strategy going forward. I think the nuisance property abatement program that Sergeant Kimerling has, you know, brought forward to us, and, you know, I really wanted to take hold of this year and run with it. I think it's a great program. I think we need to look at continued funding opportunities. We're identifying a few weeks ago some CDBG monies and different funds that are potential sources of revenue to get this project off the ground and running. I think we have to do that. We've got to think outside the box in ways that we can continue to clean up these unincorporated communities and help better life in Tulare County. So thank you very much, and you definitely have partners here on the board that are willing to help and move this project forward, and I do have an extra pair of rubber boots in case you ever need them.
We want you there.
Well, yeah, I'll come and help, sure, why not? But thank you very much, and thank you to your staff, and please send our compliments.
Well, thank you for your continued support.
Yeah, Supervisor Cox?
A couple things.
Yes, sir.
You know, I've known Dennis for quite a while. I know him to be a man to get things done. While I was on city council, there was a fire down the street from my business. A blocked wall was leaning really bad. After the fire, it looked like it was just going to topple over, and I called, and I said, you know, this looks dangerous, and two days later, there was a mover out there taking this dangerous wall down. So I know Dennis is to be someone who can get things done. Sounds like you've assembled a great team here at the county to make sure we get that done. Two other quick things. I'm looking at the $50,000 commitment. Is that an annual commitment from our budget, Mr. Rousseau?
Yes.
So we're potentially looking at 50 plus 50 plus 50 plus 50 plus any- So we're potentially looking at fifty plus fifty plus fifty plus fifty plus any, or, you know, plus anything that gets paid back. So, you know, next year, the fifty plus the fifty-six hundred. So we're looking at multiplying this money and growing this to a substantial-sized pot if we get paid back, correct?
Correct.
I have another philosophy. You say, you know, whichever property calls or screams the loudest. I wonder if we couldn't get a bigger and better bang for our buck if you do them in clusters? You know, I look in the Cutler Rosi area, and I see ten. Could you get all ten of those done for the price of six or seven if you did them all at one time? Because these, you know, these demolition companies have move-on costs, move-off costs. You know, is there a way to get a bigger bang for the buck if we do multiples in one area instead of spotting? I know the RMA has a great plan of making every supervisor up here happy by doing something in every one of our districts, you know? But for me, if you can get more done in a concentrated effort this year and then move to another area next year, you know, I wonder if you've given thought to that and if it would make a difference to these companies, or are they just figuring out how many pounds they gotta move, and they're moving it?
We can try doing that. We have made the attempt to kind of spread the wealth, to move around through the county. I want all of your support, not just from one, from one particular area.
Well, you can do a hundred percent of mine.
Well, that's only one, right? But we will, we will attempt to do that and look at that. The Kimlinger, the fifteen twenty Success was a big one that was really going to take a chunk of our money, and we had an extra assessment to do that or allocation to do that, and would like to move forward with it. Let's see where we go. There are two or three others that are rising to that occasion currently. We'd like to work with the sheriff's department, thank them for their support in this, when we serve warrants going with us into some of the situations. But they've been fight-healthful, animal control. We have worked together with them, and I believe that a team is coalescing, and you'll see greater results out of that in the future.
Supervisor
Well, I actually thought they were already doing what Mr. Cox was talking about, because I noticed that this last go-around, we're looking at primarily South County. There is one in Ivoque, but most of them tend to be in, they're all, the rest of them are all in District Two and District Five. So I thought perhaps that's kind of what you were doing, that maybe next year you'd move more to the north. I don't know if you had it in mind or just happened to be, just happened to work out that way, but I think that's a good idea, although there are always going to be instances where maybe you have a situation that is so egregious, no matter where it is, it needs to be taken care of, notwithstanding the ability to try to get more done with fewer dollars. I just wanted to point out to the board, I think it was maybe mentioned, but I still understood completely that the benefit of getting a judgment versus putting on a tax lien is, tax liens take us five years of non-payment before we can take any action to try to recover it, whereas a judgment that we get, we can force a sale within a short order and force a sale of the property and recover the money sooner. And so I think that's a very good way to go. It seems like the other approach of leaning it on the property, somehow those things just, I don't know how they slip through, but it seems like it's rare that we get recovery from those. I don't know why that is necessarily, because maybe the property doesn't sell for enough even to pay for the recovery of the past taxes and any other assessments that are accrued on the property in some of these communities. But if we, if it's the only thing there, if their taxes are current and we're just getting a judgment and going after the sale of the property to recover our six or eight thousand dollars, there's a better chance of actually recovery for us, and it's much more timely. So I think that's a great way to go, and I think the idea of building on this and using, continuing to appropriate dollars and then build more revenue coming in from recovery so that we can do more and more at a time. The last, one thing, another thing I was gonna say was, I'm glad we're not Detroit. You think we have a rich, you think we have a rich environment. When I see pictures of Detroit, it looks like the whole, most of the city looks like the kind of pictures you were showing, so gratefully, we don't have that. My last comment really, though, has to do with worker housing and the, what I call, you know, most of the pictures we see are of existing structures that have been there for a number of years. My concern is that we're creating, that I see in the county, new creations of future problems, and it's under the guise of worker housing. And I think we need to take another run at trying to resolve this matter. Worker, and I think we can use water perhaps as a vehicle. And that is, right now, under state law, we have no control over people building worker housing, other than the fact they meet our building code requirements. And Hector and people do a good job of enforcement. But we have a lot of people who begin this process that don't complete it. I have, right next to my house is a project that began six or seven years ago. There's two mobile homes and two travel trailers. The guy lives there. He has no electricity. He's got a well. He's got a septic system. You know, when do we say enough is enough on these projects to say, either you come into, you either complete it, or we're gonna take some kind of action against you? The other is that if you can go out and put twenty mobile homes out in the countryside someplace where we don't have the road systems, we don't have the, you know, and then we have a water problem, now we've created disadvantaged communities. And it's not that we created them. They are allowable under the state statute. So I really think we need to look at this again and try to come up, maybe approach our legislators about addressing this matter. And I think maybe the water thing might be the, maybe the most effective way of dealing with it, because we certainly don't want people putting twenty mobile homes out there and then having a nitrate problem. And I suspect that that's a common problem for us. Anyway, so that was my only other comment, is that I see people, I know a lot of people don't even bother with worker housing, trying to comply. They just go out there and move a bunch of mobile homes, and then if we don't call and call them on it, they don't even try to comply with that. But that is an area, I think, of concern for me, because we can clean up these old, over time, between private people, property owners, I see a lot of farmers out where I live, used to be the average-sized farm was thirty-five acres, so that meant every thirty, forty-acre block had a house and a bar and everything else. Well, over time, a lot of those have been eliminated, because farmers have just decided that they're not, they don't want to fool around being a landlord that way, and they tear them down and they start farming on the property. So those are, we can, I think, make real progress on those, but we have at the same time this whole new creation that's going on out there of mobile homes that I think is gonna create a big problem for us in the future, if not even now, so.
We've just been raided by the employee housing division, and we got a satisfactory mark. I've gone through all of the past years. This is the first time we've gotten a satisfactory remark to county in several years. It was unsatisfactory in the past.
Well, and I would say that's as to those that have gone through the process, the permit process, and they've completed it, I assume.
Yes.
I don't, I mean, what I'm concerned about are those who've begun the process at some point in the past, and they have not completed it, or a number of people that probably haven't even started. They just simply start moving a bunch of mobile homes out there, and we, people maybe assume it's a worker housing project, but they maybe have not even contacted the county.
Some of these are awfully tangled webs that they have woven out there, and it takes a little bit of unwinding to get to them. But we did just that last Friday. That's just exactly what we had gotten to. They started with two and ended up with, excuse me, they started with three approved and ended up with six. That's a community water service. The well needs to be tested. You saw the photos.
Supervisor Sheida? I know you were chomping at the bit, and now are you?
Hello?
Okay. Supervisor Ennis?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Dennis and the whole staff. You know, the Success Drive House was not only called in because of the code enforcement, but the safety of the people around it and sanitaryness of it. I see that every day. I can drive east Porterville or even out in the country. It's not just in the cities, it's in the country, too. People are not, they have no pride, they don't take care of their places, and all I can say is thank you, and I hope that we can get all this stuff cleaned up in the future. And like you say, like that one lot, and hopefully resell it to somebody that'll make it a useful place for people to live and pay taxes, so. But thanks for all your efforts. I know I have, you know, code enforcement's a big thing with me. If it's not marijuana, it's you guys, and I get both calls. So thanks for all your efforts out there. It's much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. So continue, your marching orders are, continue to think outside the box, and let's see what we can do to keep this thing going and growing.
I've got several ideas coming forward to bring with you, and thanks. We just want to look behind us and see you standing there.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll be there. Thank you. Kathleen?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to reassure the board, specifically Supervisor Cox, when it's not possible to recover, say, to re-lean on the property, or if there's an award of administrative code enforcement judgment, we are actively pursuing that. County council is working with RMA. I'm pleased to report to you that one of your SCOF laws was unsuccessful as of yesterday in avoiding having to pay us a substantial sum by trying to discharge us in bankruptcy. And we had a judgment debtor's exam for one of your medical marijuana folk. I believe that was Thursday. So we will be keeping you advised. We are, if someone has assets, we are actively trying to collect from those people. In particular, people like landlords who allow inappropriate activity on their property, they're responsible for it, and many of them have
Resources.
Resources. So when they do, we are actively attempting to do that.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Council, I believe we have need for closed session, and there is a special item that you would like to have considered?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Before I announce the board's closed session items, I did want to make a request of the board that it add an urgent item to the agenda. The board may add an urgent item to the agenda and take action if certain conditions are met. The board must publicly identify the item. The board must vote to add the item, and the board must find that there was a need to take immediate action, and the need for action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. After the agenda was posted, in fact, I believe it was yesterday, county staff was alerted to a potentially dangerous condition which might create, be created on county property by private citizens in the immediate future.